Call the meeting to order, please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the January 7th, first, the first meeting of the 2020 year for the Post Falls City Council. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. Wow, you're stealth. I was gonna say, except for Mr. Malloy, who will be here sometime, hopefully.
Stuck on the freeway.
Yeah, so I'm glad you made it. Under ceremonies, appointments, presentations, first item up is the swearing in, not swearing at, swearing in of Councilor Thorson, Councilor Malloy, and Councilor Borders. So if you would like to step down, please. And let us know if you need help.
At least she didn't fall off.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Councilor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations. I'd like to thank you all for running the clean campaign, yes. We do have a couple announcements. Post Falls sanitation will be doing the Christmas tree pickup on Saturday, January 11th. Trees must have all decorations removed and be cut into four-foot length bundles and placed by curbside before 6:30 a.m. City business offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Finance Director Jason Faulkner announced that the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Federal Reporting to the City of Post Falls and the city's finance department for its comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR. I just love acronyms. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area for governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFR demonstrates a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate the city's financial story and to motivate potential users and groups to read the CAFR. The city also received GFOA's award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting, the PAFR Award. In order to be eligible for the PAFR Award, the city must also submit its CAFR to GFOA, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in the Financial Reporting Program, and receive the Excellence Award for the current year. So Jason, thank you to you and your staff. It's something that we have become accustomed to here because you guys have done it for so long, but we continue to appreciate it. So thanks for your efforts.
Thank you. I think this is the 21st year.
You've got a good record going.
All right. Yeah, don't break the streak.
Pressure's on, right?
Yeah, no pressure.
Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are no amendments to tonight's agenda.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar? Just Shelley had an issue she had to take care of tonight, so Jason is filling in for Shelley, so.
All right. Item number A are minutes from December 4th, 2019, Council, City Council Workshop. Item B are the minutes from the December 17th, 2019, Council, City Council Meeting. Item C are the payables from December 10th, 2019 to December 30th, 2019. Item D are the Remington Apartments Construction Improvement Agreement. And item number E are the Arrowleaf Estate Subdivision Platt Application.
I just want to make comment, one of the items on the payables was under Mayor and Council, it was for about $18,000, I think, and I call for further explanation, but it was our semi-annual contribution to CityLink. So if people see that, Mayor and Council are not going out and having a good time, it's actually the...
Right on the bus.
If we are, you didn't invite me.
That's right. So it's actually half of our contribution for CityLink, so I did want to mention. Any other comments or questions on the consent calendar?
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Motion second, further discussion.
Shannon, would you take the roll?
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Tonight, we do have one, and it is a post exchange of real property with the Post Falls School District. Mr. Beecham, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Excuse me, John. If anybody does wish to testify or comment in this public hearing, there's a form in the back. Fill it out, please, and give it to Shannon, and we'll let you speak at the appropriate time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Beecham, Public Works Director. I'm here to present a proposed land exchange with the Post Falls School District. I should note that Warren Wilson has been helping with a lot of details on this, so I may defer to him with some questions just on the contracting side of things, if we get to that. And if this presentation looks somewhat stolen, it's because I repurposed his from the last time we talked about this. We're proposing to exchange with the school district 80 acres that the school district has an option to purchase, with 70 acres the city owns. These properties are on the south side of Hayden Avenue. The city's property is shown here in red, and the school district's potential property is shown here in blue. Any questions on the location there? We've got Greens Ferry on the eastern boundary there. Kind of recapping the need for this, the school district is, has been in the market for a site for a new school. They're looking to build something within the next three to five years, and they've been working with city staff to identify potential good fits. Site, the site I just mentioned, has been identified as a good school site potentially. If we were to give that property to the school district to build a school, then we would need to replace it with some other property suitable for land application, which is the intended use of the property we currently own. So we'd need to have similar size and be compatible with that plan, basically. So the school district secured that parcel, that 80-acre parcel. It is compatible with our land application plans. It's also currently in irrigated farming and would be basically the same transfer acre per acre. There is a need to drill a well on that site in the future, so the reason we're proposing a 70-for-80 acre swap is to off-site, offset the cost to drill that well, about $120,000. May sound strange that you need a well if you're gonna do land application of wastewater. The reason is your wastewater, your treated wastewater is not always available, and your crop would die if you weren't able to irrigate it. So in order to keep the crop, you need to have that irrigation available, even if you're only using it a little bit of the time of the year. I have maps showing more detail, but in general, 70 acres. I will highlight, because this will come up in a second, the reason that there's a corner missing here, this is an East Green Acres well site. They're on the corner of Hayden Avenue and Chase, if I'm not mistaken. Not a lot of detail here, but this is the 80-acre parcel the school district is proposing to exchange. And what this shows is the adjoining nature of the school district parcel with our existing land application properties. This is owned by the City of Post Falls. This property is owned by the City of Rathrum, and under contract to be provided for land application in the future. And this property in the green is also owned by the City of Post Falls. So this kind of nicely completes that corridor where we could put a pipeline through there without needing easements from adjoining landowners. Some things to consider, we believe the city is whole in this transaction. We're not losing anything, we're not necessarily gaining anything, but it does provide a benefit to the school district. It does provide us with separation from that East Green Acres irrigation district well. There are setbacks around wells for land application treated wastewater, so that basically eliminates any potential conflict there, any acreage we'd have to offset through setback. As I mentioned, it consolidates our property, and we have talked to the school district about managing leases, basically in tandem together, so we'd have similar farming for the next few years. If this is something the city council wished to proceed with, there's a real estate exchange agreement on the agenda for your consideration. An ordinance would come at the next meeting that would finalize that, and then the exchange would close in February. Concludes my presentation.
Questions, John?
I just got one question. I don't know if John can answer this, though. I was reading where the school district is looking at maybe four to five years in order to do the school site. Do they already have funding in place for those new schools, or is that going to have to go back and do a bond election, or is that...
I'm not aware of the answer to that, sorry.
Okay. John?
So the school district doesn't currently own the property we're proposing to exchange, is that correct?
My understanding is they have, they've signed a contingent offer on it, so they would purchase it if we agreed to swap this land.
Mr. Wilson?
So I can answer that. They have it under contract. The idea would be if the exchanges are approved, the closings would happen essentially concurrently. The school district would close, and immediately following the closure of their purchase of that property, we would do the swap. So it would happen in essentially short order, bang, bang.
Understood. Thank you.
Why is that, you might not know the answer to this, why is the piece of property that we own preferable to the piece of property that the school district is in the process of buying?
This map probably illustrates that the best. If you were to construct a sewer line for this property, the nearest point of connection would be here in the Crown Point neighborhood, which is relatively achievable. If you zoom out to the parcel they're looking at buying, this map might be better for that. So in the blue here, it's not really proximate to sewer anywhere, similar with water utilities. So it would be kind of cost prohibitive for them to develop that site. It doesn't affect our ability to use it for land application, though.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak in favor of Gary Nystrom. When you come up, please, Mr. Nystrom, name for the record. And before you start, we will, anybody who speaks, please look, we'll have, we have a timer here, you have four minutes, so just keep right...
It ain't gonna take four minutes.
That's all yours.
Okay, my name is Gary Nystrom, and I actually own a investment piece of property there in Crown Point. I had worked with the school district in coming up with future plans, and one of the big things I do know is they need another junior high school. And I had recommended to Jerry Keane to see if they could swap for that land, because I think it would save them on sewer costs, because then there's no lift station that would have to be put in. And I think it's the best deal for the city, and I think that other parcel that would be next, if the city would ever fix that up, I could just imagine a nice regional park out there. Trust me, I could see a nice regional park, and maybe the cost of putting ball fields could be split 50/50 with the school district, and you've got parking that the school district's gonna have. I think there's a lot of investment that can go both ways. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Neutral, not in attendance, but wanting to have a letter read. Mark Saul. Mark Saul. Says, "Question schools and playgrounds next to land application site, number one. Number two, Hayden and Chase, Hayden and Spokane, Hayden and Idaho, and Hayden and Greens Ferry could all need increased traffic control. Hayden is extremely busy now for side traffic to cross. Number three, property was purchased with Post Falls sewer bonds. People of the neighboring area were promised an open space scenario. This is not surplus property unless Post Falls has abandoned plans for wastewater land applications. The property then needs disposed of according with laws of Idaho." That was Mr. Mark Saul. Also neutral, but wishing to speak, Carla Skinner. Trying to get name for the record as you approach, please.
My name is Carla Skinner. I live at 2127 Clark Fork Parkway. I used to live out on that property, and originally, I believe around 2003, Post Falls floated a $10 million bond issued to buy the 1,000 acres that was along there. Evidently, it's gone by the wayside, I don't know. It surprised me that the school actually purchased that land, and one of the current people who lived there said the land went up for sale last year, and it surprised him that it had gone up for sale. The problem that they had when they bought that was the land would not perk. At that time, EPA said they wouldn't approve the land app, and we thought it was kind of a dead issue. And it surprised me to see that only 600 acres had been purchased, which was in the newspaper yesterday instead of 1,000 acres. These are some of the things that have confused me, and I have a lot of questions about it. Where the money went for purchasing the land in 2003, why it was not purchased all the time, and I think it wasn't purchased because it would not perk. The traffic, knowing Greens Ferry and living out there, that's just a short distance from Prairie Avenue, and that is a nasty intersection. Then you go down a little bit further south, and you have your brand-new elementary school just off of Greens Ferry. Then you also have the high school and another elementary school. So that also surprised me that they wanted to put another school up there, figuring the traffic during school hours. I don't know where the utilities go up on Chase, and that was one of the questions I had. I wanted to see how far they went up and what kind of utilities you were talking about. I know sewer does not go out there, because we were on five-acre parcels with septics. The school is badly needed, very badly needed, but infrastructure needs to be addressed as well, and that was the concern I had in particular, was the infrastructure. If you intend to put land app, in the newspaper, it said Class A. I'm not familiar with Class A. I know that when we opposed it before, the land app, affluent land app, was classified as just partially treated sewer water, which would have particulates in it. You do use chemicals to treat it, and we were trying to get you to make the sewer plant a tricerary, which was drinkable water, to put the money into that. And I know money is very difficult for a growing city. When we opposed, we came...
Time, he was tracking.
Okay.
But we appreciate, and I think we'll ask Mr. Beecham to come up for rebuttal, and maybe he can provide some answers, and if not, we'll get some answers for you.
I'd appreciate it, because it just wasn't making common sense to me.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. John, you want to come back up on rebuttal, any of those, or Mr. Wilson, you could chime in as well?
Sure, I'm happy to. Again, John Beecham, Public Works Director. Couple things I think I would emphasize in clarification of that response to that. I wasn't here at the time of the bond. I can't speak to whether it was intended to purchase 1,000 acres or 600 acres. I know that the eventual purchase in 2004 and 2005 was a little over 600 acres. So we've got the, I can get my arrow back, 300 acres here, including this red section that city owned. We've got about 150 acres here, city-owned, and then if I bump over to the next map, the bigger map, there's another 150 acres north and east of Greens Ferry and Hayden that's city-owned. There is 300 acres of Rathrum-owned property that may be where some of the confusion has come in there. The total there would be closer to 1,900-something if you include the Rathrum-owned property. So I can't answer that today. I'm happy to dig into it, and I can get your contact information, and we can talk more if needed. To go back to the exchange, there's really no change in the city's plans. This addresses the first comment. We're still in the long-term planning to apply Class A reclaimed water, and I'll talk about that in a little more detail in a second, on the prairie to cropland. And what we're doing is proposing to apply that water in this location, in the blue location, instead of the red location. So it's not really a change in plans, we're using the money for the same purposes, which kind of addresses that first comment. I do want to make sure to clarify for anybody that is confused, the city does own this red section today. The school district has a contract to purchase the section that's in blue, which is currently owned by the Satchwell family. If that purchase goes through, right after that, our land exchange would go through if it's approved tonight and by the school board. Doesn't really pertain to the land swap, but just because it was raised, I'll talk a little bit about chemicals in the wastewater. We do propose to use alum to treat, to remove the phosphorus from the wastewater. What the alum does is it binds onto the phosphorus particulates and lets us filter them out with our tertiary membrane filtration system. It's not a drinking water plant. There's really no pathway to go from wastewater to drinking water in the state of Idaho today, not directly anyway, but it's about as close as you can get. It's the same technology you'd use in a drinking water plant, it's just not gonna be called a drinking water plant. And the water will be cleaned to a standard that's suitable for use on playgrounds, fields, places people play. The only requirement is that you post a sign so the public knows what it is. That's opposed to other, I don't wanna say lesser, but different classes of reclaimed water, which prohibit public contact, so you can only water if they're not on their, if they're not on the ground. That would be like a Class B or lower wastewater. So this allows basically direct public contact with the water, because it's had so many pathogens and chemicals removed.
One more question, utilities?
I think I mentioned that originally. There's sewer and water in Crown Point, so those would be the nearest utilities to that site. I believe there's East Green Acres water that goes along Chase and along Hayden Avenue in that location, too. So water would likely be provided from the main roads there. Sewer would likely be provided through an easement granted to the school district from the city into Crown Point. In terms of the roads, I think that's something that would be handled at the time a site plan was proposed for a school and whatever that size school was proposed.
Mr. Wilson, anything to add under rebuttal?
One quick comment. There was a comment about the number of schools on, sort of on that northern end of the city. Part of that is because what they're looking for is a 60-to-80 acre site, and finding that closer in is almost impossible. There's just not that big of holdings that are available in town, so by necessity, they're being forced out to the periphery. This site is as close in as we could get them and find a location where utilities were reasonably available, and it met the size criteria that they were looking for.
Any questions of either Mr. Wilson or Mr. Beecham?
The lady raised a question about the land not being able to perk.
So that would be news to me, but that doesn't necessarily preclude the type of land application we would be doing anyway. The way the rules work over the aquifer, you have to account for all the water you put on the crop being taken up by the crop. So even if it doesn't perk, the crop would still be able to use that water in that topsoil layer, and that's basically the way reclaimed water on the prairie works under today's rules.
It would almost make me think that we would prefer land that wouldn't perk, in a sense.
Because you don't want to go to the aquifer.
I'd have to think through some of the practical implications of that. I don't know if you grow as well there, but I will note there's a house sort of right in the midst of our holdings there, and I believe they're on a septic tank. So I know there's septic tanks out there that do perk, and that's why I would say it would be news to me if that property didn't have infiltration abilities.
Thanks, sir. That will close public hearing. Yes, sir.
It makes sense to me. I would, if nobody else has a comment, move to approve the proposed exchange of real estate with Post Falls School District.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up on the agenda is unfinished business, and tonight we have none, followed by citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Anyone wishes to testify, come forward. Seeing none, we'll go down into new business. Tonight, we have none, followed by ordinances and resolutions. Again, we have none. Administrator staff reports.
We have none tonight, sir.
Okay. Followed by mayor comments, and all I'd like to say is, you know, happy 2020, hard to believe it's here. Kids will be back in school. They're back in school now, I think, right? So please be cautious, especially as roads tend to become less safe in the winter. Council comments.
I would just like to thank the Post Falls Police Department and give my appreciation during the appreciation week for law enforcement. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrie?
I have an observation about the Mullen traffic signal, Mullen to Spokane Street, because I use it all the time. It used to be better than it is now. I am noticing northbound traffic, not being able to make it through, as well as people turning and going northbound off of Salties, is getting balled up there frequently.
As a quick response, it's still, they're still working with the group on getting that whole thing working correctly. So it has not fully been, it hasn't learned everything that needs to learn yet.
Because, I think they said originally six months, that they were gonna look at traffic patterns for six months. How long has it been?
Eight, probably.
But it's, I assure you...
It has to, so it sat there for a while, and they were waiting to...
Excuse me, I gotta get, I'm sorry. It was gonna be a quick response, I was gonna let you do it.
Bob Seale, Community Development Director. So the basics on it are that when it was first installed, it kind of had to sit there, waiting for them to be able to come back, put in the right parts, get it moving, and so we were kind of behind schedule on that. I believe that now it is finally in that learning phase, so it has only started learning somewhat recently in order to be, you know, get it to a better point where it works correctly as you want it to. So we still have a little bit longer before it will be working fully at the optimized level, so.
Yeah, because it's not just like rush hour.
No, it's not done yet.
I'm just very thankful for that bypass was on 7th.
Oh geez, Louise, yeah.
I always take it because that intersection's not good.
I have another suggestion for that. I found myself at 10, 11 o'clock at night, you know, later in the evening, using Spokane Street. When there is no traffic on Mullen.
Stopping.
Perhaps at a certain time, that could be a yellow flashing.
Oh yeah, that's a good point. I will run that through...
Make all my dreams come true, Bob.
Although, Carrie, it wasn't too long ago we had someone complaining because they didn't know what a red flashing meant.
As long as it's not a roundabout, yes. As long as it's not a roundabout, yes. But yeah, so that was my observation, and now my husband would be happy I mentioned that.
Along that same line, Bob, I understand it took a while. Do you have an idea when that's, that six-month learning phase will be completed?
Can I say spring?
I've heard issues.
You can say whatever you want, but they're going to hold you to it.
I know. I'm going to say spring.
It's on the record.
Late spring. How about that? I don't have, I don't have the latest timeframe on it. I can talk to Bill and Rob tomorrow and find out what we've got for it.
If you could send us an email on that, too, because I will say from experience, that's the most talked about stoplight in Post Falls right now, so.
Well aware, yeah.
And we listen to our constituents.
Thanks, Bob. Tonight, we do need an executive session.
Yes, we do.
To last no longer than?
20 minutes.
I'd move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for a public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of the legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but intimately likely to be eliminated, litigated. And that it lasts no more than 20 minutes.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhun?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We'll enter executive session.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll enter executive session.[518.12]